Okay. Uh, I'm gonna welcome everybody to the town of Andover Board of Selectmen regular meeting for Monday, July tenth. We're getting started at uh. Seven oh two. And we're gonna get started with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Yeah, I can't when you run it through, I can't do that.
Okay, so we're gonna get started with public speaking. Let's start with applauseies. How are you Kathy and Mike?
Hi.
We're good.
Do I have a good? We're good.
All right, nothing, nothing for you guys to make us aware of.
No, I think that Eric's gonna do all the talking for me tonight. Aren't you Eric?
I guess. What are we talking about?
Well, I I sent you a text, so I I think you got that. Um, and what we talked about our bus. I think we're good. We're good.
Okay. All right, Linda Fish.
All set.
All set. And I'm assuming our cellphone caller is the Honorable Dennis O'Brien, correct?
Correct.
All right, always good to have you here, Dennis. Okay, additions and deletions to the agenda, item three. Anybody? Walla, go ahead.
I want to add, oh, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. Wherever you see necessary or appropriate. Uh, we talked about this last month, and I think we called it signs down at Long Hill Fields.
Yeah, one second.
Mm hmm.
Ah. We'll put it at nine G.
Okay.
Um. Veteran. Memorial. Bill. Bill. Signage. Anybody else? I'll second that. Is there anything else Scott you gotta bring?
No, but most of that, thank you.
Okay, Jeff Murray, anything?
No, Jeff, I'm all set, thanks.
All right, so let's vote on adding nine G Veterans Memorial Long Hill Field signage to the agenda. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna move on to the treasurer's report, item four. Eric, if you'd like to.
Okay, so the treasurer's report is included in the packet. It is basically for the bills we got through the end of July. It closes just before July, but we didn't actually do any more checks. Uh, in the month or in the month of June. Sorry, I meant to say June, not July. Uh, so. What are your questions related to that? Or the transfers required to make up the overages?
Well, is there any information as to our um? Oh, let's stick with our income for one second. So let's talk about our taxes collected. Um. So we had budgeted for nine point nine million in total current year taxes and only collected nine point four. Is there any information?
We we ended up collecting more than that. Uh, if you look down, um. Da 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 da. There were two things that. Uh, i- if you look down in the the. The tax collector's report, which is later, later in the packet. It has the final numbers for the tax collector, which did not make it into this budget to actual. Cause I just copied what was given to the Board of Finance the last time. And that wasn't ready then. So it's not that bad. Um, but it's still, uh, you know, we never collect a hundred percent. What we've been doing the last bunch of years, and I've had a conversation Cheryl in the Board of Finance about fixing it going forward. Is we've kind of made two assumptions. We made the assumption that we're gonna collect a hundred percent of the taxes in the current year. Uh, but that we're gonna, we're gonna ignore the supplemental appropriation. Because in most years, those two things balance each other out. Um, I've never really been happy with that. Um, so going forward, we are going to s- to split that. So make more realistic assumption about what taxes are collected. Um, but then also include a value for the supplemental appropriation and not just kind of uh, use one to offset the other. Um, if that makes sense.
So there there's some allocation issues from my end, so we obviously collected more in prior year taxes if this is all accounted for correctly. And the supplemental is a total addition to the numbers, but the top line, the current year taxes, we were short, we're short by five hundred thousand dollars. And you're telling, you're telling me, I'm just looking at the page four.
Right. Correct.
Right? And so you're telling us, just so I understand, you're telling us that the tax collectors' report is different from this information, and it's a paints a better picture.
It does paint a better picture, yes, and it is different from this information. And that five hundred thousand doesn't account for the supplemental appropriation. Um, which brings in somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was a hundred and thirty eight. That it shows up on here as there's no budgeted item, so that that's fine. It's just the total, the total offset. You know, like if I'm just looking at revenues, I'm going, okay, the intergovernment revenues are pretty good. Uh, our total tax collection is off a couple hundred thousand dollars because the supplemental added to what we were doing. Um.
Correct.
And then our fee revenue, so revenues charged by the building department, by the town clerk. Were sh- were light by thirty or forty thousand dollars, forty grand, forty to fifty thousand dollars.
Right, the building and land use fees in the end will actually be over because the last numbers for uh, June were about ten thousand dollars. So in the transfer station, remember we this was before we cleared the month of June, which is our biggest single month for transfer station. So I suspect that will be pretty close to a hundred percent of collections. The clerk fees will definitely be down. Um, we knew the rentals were down because half of the money for the rentals was uh, what should have been from uh. You know, we were assuming we were going to rent the field both the spring and fall, and that did not happen last year. Um, so that was part of it, and the other part of it was we realized that we had been booking on the town's side. The fee that Cool had been paying uh, to use the school building. And I think the Board of Finance decided that was more appropriately booked on the school side. So that accounts for part of that. Uh, for those fees. So. You know, mixed, we're we're definitely down. The clerk fees were down, uh, a lot of the clerk fees relate to uh how many land in building transactions there are. Um, and this year, because the interest rates have shot up, that has been a lot lower than than we forecast.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions related to anything on the treasurer's report? Okay, uh, we should talk about um, the transfers. So and and just one last thing for me, Eric, so if I'm looking at this, um. Just so the town understands it, where are we when I'm looking at this report? Am I looking at the bottom and going? We are in a better position or, you know, from our budget, or are we in a worse position from our budget?
Uh, we've underspent on the expense side for the year.
Is it the hundred and thirty five thousand dollars that's on? Page eleven?
Uh.
Or is it a greater amount?
It's a different amount. Um. And this is, this is a question that Cheryl is trying to resolve right now. Because part of what's happening is the transfers are getting booked twice. Um, if you look in the nine 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 zero zero category. Those all keep getting booked twice, and that screws up all the numbers that are there. Um. So I can't tell you what the exact number is. I know Cheryl's working on that. Um. Uh, she was having a difficulty time figuring that out.
Okay. All right, anybody else? All right, the she's, the treasurer's provided the check registers for really the quarter. Oh, he brought May, June, July, oh, May, June. For the last quarter of the year. Any questions on that? Okay, page twenty. There is a request for over expenditure of budget appropriation.
Correct, that's for the current year budget, uh, not last year's budget. So uh, NECOG, who's the organization that provides the animal control services. Um, when we were doing budgeting originally, they sent me a estimated guideline for what they thought they were going to charge municipalities. Um, and uh, the number they actually ended up bringing and deciding charge uh, was higher than that. Um, but that's not anything I can control. That is, you know, NECOG, the Northeast Cog as an organization, made that decision. Um, so that is results in an increase of uh, it's around twelve hundred dollars, which is under the threshold that I can approve myself, but I do have to report it to you at the Board of Finance. So I am doing that. To say that that budget will be over for the year.
Okay. Anybody have any questions related to that? Okay, so that's a twelve percent increase for um. For NECOG and for animal services, correct Eric?
That is correct.
All right, uh, page twenty one, we have um. The treasurer's presented us a list of transfers between um. Line items within departments. Anybody have any questions related to any of these? So this goes from page twenty one, twenty two. Twenty three, twenty four. Total of ninety six thousand dollars that is being moved between line items. The only one, um. Well, since Kathy sat there and said that you have information, we'll go, one of the larger ones is senior transportation. Let's just get an understanding of that so we can all be aware of what what is going on and what we need to see happen moving forward. So.
There we go. Sure, so uh, basically the major issue with senior transportation is that we way over spent or way over expended on vehicle maintenance. Um, you know, we had, when we did this budget, anticipated we would have had the new bus in place for this year. And we really were not budgeting for keeping that existing clunker that we have on the road. Um. You know, th- that is the major difference. We have had some other repairs on other vehicles. Uh, we've had some issues with the ramps on. You know, I think all three of our vehicles at this point that it had, that it had to be repaired. Uh, those are the major con- contributors to that.
Right.
And then Eric, just on the four one two five, the auditor and the actuary.
Uh, four one.
The the annual audit. Seventeen thousand two fifty.
Yeah, so you, last year, the Board of Selectmen approved a supplemental payment to Mike, the auditor. Not for this year's audit, but for the audit for the year before. That's what that seventeen thousand dollar overage basically uh, represents. That was the additional cost uh, of us not being ready for last year's audit.
Okay. Um. Understood. Anybody else? Those are the main largest transactional items. So I'm assuming Eric, we need to approve this?
Uh, no, you don't. This is actually the Board of Finance's to approve. And they approved it at the meeting, so it was done by July one. So I'm giving this to you basically for informational purposes, and in case you had questions.
Okay. All right, page twenty five, the AES levy, just so we can go through it, um.
So I just provided this again at the last Board of Finance meeting. Um, as many of you know, we get a levy schedule from RAM that basically says when their expenses, when they anticipate expenses and how much they need. So that every month we give them a different amount, but it totals up to our total levy. Um, the elementary school has not really been able to provide something, that level of detail. So I asked at the last Board of Finance meeting how they would like to handle it. And the decision they made was to allocate the money uh, in ten monthly installments uh, starting in July. Um. You know, and just do it that way. So this represents the levy schedule that the Board of Finance agreed to.
Okay. Now, this impacts, um, have we've gotten our um. Our state account set up?
Uh, we have not. Uh, we've at this point submitted the paperwork uh, five times. Um, they seem to reject it each time for something different. Um, I haven't heard about the latest submission, but Cheryl and I are hopeful that this one will actually be uh, accepted. Um, Cheryl and I also had a conversation with the uh. Our commercial or governmental banking uh, VP at MNT Bank, which was very unsatisfying, um, but you know, just because he was not at all, even though it was a scheduled meeting. You know, he was just not prepared at all, so it was very frustrating in that sense. But the the uh, bottom line is, he asked that they come up with a uh. Essentially, a higher percentage offset for the money that we keep in their, in their account. Cause our goal is to to keep basically around six hundred thousand dollars in that account and put everything else in the stiff account. Um. So that's what we're, we're leaning to. Um, the bank says they would also offer us potentially a money market account if we wanted to keep the money in the bank. Uh, as opposed to the stiff account, but at this point, I'm not sure I see the advantage of that. But I'm waiting for them to come back and tell us what the actual rate would be on the money market account, so we can compare.
Okay. All right, anybody have any other questions related to the treasurer's information? All right, if not, we're gonna move on to item five, board and commission presentations. Eric, do we have any? Doesn't appear to be.
Uh, we don't have any presentations. Um, as far as the boards go, we just have a series of appointments um, that you as a board can consider.
Okay. So is that item six?
Uh, that is correct.
Okay, so we have. How many of these do we have? Okay. Well, we'll go through each one of them, so uh, and I'll just read them, and if anybody has any questions, we'll sit there and, you know, we can we can talk about it. Norton's Children Funds Commission members. All members wish to continue their service. Charlotte Nelson, Bill Penn, Heidi Zenefantas, Lu- Louise Goodwin, and Linda Armstrong. Next one is the Memorial Day Committee. Five-member committee with the option for two alternates, current members that are seeking reappointment. Are Kim Hawes, Carol Lee, John McCall, Robert Post. And there are two additional uh, potential appointees, Louise Goodwin and Wayne Thorpe. Recreation Committee, five-member committee with the option for two alternates, current members seeking uh, reappointment. Brian Briggs, Anne Marie Dagel, Kim Hawes, Carol Lee, and Cindy Murray. Inland Wetlands, it's a five-member committee, option for three alternates. Uh, current members that are seeking reappointment are Jed Larson, William Monroe, Duncan Fife. Alternates Janet Massey and Edmund Smith. Uh, new member to be appointed is Brad Keel. Conservation Commission, five-member committee with option for two alternates. Current members seeking reappointment, Evan Agar- um, sorry. And. Wow, I should know that. Edwin, I I wanna say it's like McGuire, so Aguirre, Evan Aguirre, Mary Ann Guile, Hank Gruner, Mike Plazey, Kathy Shea, Kerry Compton, and Gary Guile. Last but not least, the Library Board of Directors, five-member committee with the option of two alternates. Uh, current members that are seeking reappointment are Sharon Shipshankel, so I'm assuming the library board is only adding Sharon to their current roster? And the rest of the members are staying on board?
That is my guess. Uh, I know they had wanted to uh, appoint um. Sharon Shipshankel, I think she's an alternate now, they were wanting to appoint her as a regular member. Um, but to be honest, I didn't go through this list ahead of time, so I can't tell you for sure.
I mean, I knew from talking to the the library board that they were looking for a new, an additional regular member, so I'm assuming Sharon is filling that spot. Paul, any news on that one or anything you can share on that? No?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, does anybody have any uh, issues with any of the committee requests?
Nope.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we uh. We we appoint or reappoint all of the requested members to the various boards just reviewed.
I'll second that.
All right, further discussion on any of the appointees? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. All right, new business. Uh, well, we're not new business. Uh, resignations, item seven. Nothing.
None that I know.
Okay, Eric, uh, the town administrators' report, it's not included in the package, but I know that you have some things that you wanna discuss.
Yeah, so I sent this separately in this time, instead of sending what is more like my traditional administrator's report. What I sent the board was a project summary of everything we had going on and what the status was um, in terms of construction projects. So I'll go through it very quickly. If you have any questions, just stop me. Um, first is uh, talking about bridges and culverts. Uh, Bunker Hill Bridge is at the seventy percent design stage. Uh, if anyone wants the preliminary drawings for it, I'm happy to send them to you. I don't think I've done that already. Um. Long Hill Bridge is working towards the thirty percent design stage. Um, I know the DOT has sent out the notifications. Uh, at least some of the notifications for the towns that were awarded uh, the state fifty fifty grant for culvert replacement. Um, I haven't gotten anything. Um, I don't know whether it would come to me or you, Jeff, but um, if you haven't seen anything, and I haven't seen anything. We probably did not get that grant. Um, I was gonna wait a few more days and then reach out to the DOT and ask them directly. Um, usually in a couple of weeks, the governor will take credit for it by putting out a list in his blurb, and we'll know for sure. But I'm guessing at this point, we probably did not get it. Uh, next up for um, roadwork or for building projects uh, is probably all of you know at this point, the community slash senior center. The zoning special permit was uh, accepted. Um, I got a copy of a revised set of drawings today from DSC Engineering. Um, there were a couple of things on there that were still uh, wrong. Um, which, so I had a conversation with the chief engineer there, and I'm hoping tomorrow I will get a final set of prints. At that point, I will you know, make a set. Um. Review them with the zoning agent in the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And if he's okay with signing off on them, I will have my Lars created. I don't wanna make the my Lars uh, until I know uh, it's acceptable to them, cause my Lars are expensive. Um, after that uh, we will need to go back to the Health Department and the Wetlands Department um, for their final approval, since we've changed some things related to both those agencies. Uh, but that's uh, going on fairly well. Um, Town Hall HVAC project. I I frankly just have not gotten back to that. I will uh, get the information to Jeff Murray, he was the other person uh, on the committee, I already gave it to Adrian. Um, so it's my fault for not getting it to Jeff. We did get approval by SHPO. Um, the State Historic Preservation Office has decided that the Town Hall is indeed not historic. Uh, and therefore we can take out our wall-mounted ACs. Um, and they're old, but not actually historic. And replace them with ductless splits. Uh, same thing with the Fire Department HVAC, the Fire Board of Commissioners is meeting tonight. They will appoint their member for the review panel. I'll give them the information too. Uh, and then the goal is to bring back in the contractor to talk about both projects uh, before we actually award the bids. Um. The museum renovations, nothing's been started with that uh, because of the dollar threshold that will need to go to RFP. There is thirty thousand dollars budgeted for this year. Um, and we do have to go to SHPO first and make sure that what we're proposing uh, is enough to satisfy them. Um, so we can get the other project, the senior transportation hub project going. Um, the tear down of the old firehouse. Honestly, I really have not made any progress on that lately. Uh, my goal was to try to reach out to SHPO in the next couple of weeks and get authorization for the tear down. Uh, so we can proceed with that. Um, as far as roadway projects, at this point, all the shimming is complete. Um, we're waiting on our schedule for crack seal. Um, and then chip seal again from Foreman. Uh, I think all this rain is delayed a bunch of projects, so we're looking at sometime around the end of July for both of those. And again, most of that will be on the north side of town. Um, the Department of Transportation has still not issued any notification on the trip grant program. So we're still really hoping that that's funded, but we don't know at this point. Um, as far as the study grant for the Route three sixteen connection. We did not get the DEP rec trails grants. However, our legislator legislative team uh, specifically MD Ramen, um, although I suspect Steve helped out with it also. Uh, did get us a hundred thousand dollar bond board uh, for the study and the design phase for a multi-use connection uh, between Uh, between where we are here in the municipal campus and the rail trail. So I'm hoping to engage our, the new town planner as soon as he's on board. Um, and my goal is to get that. You know. I don't know whether I can push it fast enough to be ready for a lots of grant application. Um, cuz those are gonna be due as far as I know somewhere around January or February. I suspect that's too tight a timetable, but if I can, my goal would be to get to the, to get through the design phase. You know, in time for a lots of application. Um, pickleball, I know you guys have already probably realized that. Uh, we're uh the pickleball enthusiasts are looking for additional ports townwide. Um, you know, we've taken a look at a couple of locations. There's really two possible locations. One is behind the community center and the second is down by the existing athletic fields off of Riverside Drive. Um, I think based on the pluses and minuses of both of those. Riverside Drive is probably a better location. We have had preliminary conversations with. The Conservation Commission and the Wetlands Agent. And the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission about what would have to happen to do that. Um, the, but I think that that really has to be. You know, the Board of Selectmen has to be on board if we're gonna keep pursuing that. Cuz at some point we would have to start spending money um on any kind of design or figuring out what we're doing down there. And then that's the major. You know, my only concern with the location down by the ball field is just we have to accept the fact that. Uh, certain times of the year and in certain years that will flood. And we have to make sure that whatever subbase is put in there under the courts. Uh, can handle that and be saturated without, you know, causing problems. Uh, so I think. We're gonna need some engineering support with that. It's not just as simple as, you know, paving a square and and putting up a net fence around it. Um, it would have to be done thoughtfully, but I think it could be done at that location. Uh. That's pretty much all I wanted to cover unless you guys have questions for me regarding any of that.
Uh, anybody? Well, as far as pickleball not being an enthusiast, I think it's a great idea. I would want to make sure that. Uh, the Recreation Commission is at least informed and on board with it. Um. But I think it's a great idea. Anybody else? Anything? Okay. Alright Eric, we'll move on from item eight and we'll go into old business. Nine A, the status of the Community Center RFP contract.
Uh, so I was kinda hoping Adrian would be here to discuss that. But uh. We do have a contract with the general contractor. Um, as I think we should be, they should be able to submit for a building permit within the next. You know, couple of weeks, we do have a couple. You know, minor hurdles we've gotta to crawl over until we get to that point. But at that point, it's primarily in uh Adrian and Scott's hands. Because they were the people that you elected to be the essentially the owner's representation during the bill.
Uh, I know I've spoken to Adrian about that. I know he's. He's confident in his ti- in the timeline that he's basically. Established, so hopefully we can sit there and get that moving. I would like to um. Schedule some type of groundbreaking ceremony. Uh, I spoke with um. Mark Brinker from the Board of Finance and Jerry Kermei from the Board of Education who would both. Be willing to attend with the rest of the Board of Selectmen and uh. Of course, uh, the senior coordinator and all of her friends. Um, so if we can get that on the schedule and Jeff Murray had a very good idea previously uh coordinated with the senior luncheon. That would be great. Uh, I think that would be positive for the community. So, um, Eric, if you can work at scheduling that up. That would be great.
Okay.
Pretty sure Fridays are good days for everybody. Alright. Okay, um. Nine B, handover personnel policy discussion.
So this has been on there for a while. Um, what I would like is I was. I was hoping we would be far enough along in the uh conversation regarding. The uh union contracts. Um, because those two kinda have to be thought of together in some ways. Um, I would like to put this off one more month, but I really don't wanna put it off anymore, any longer than that. Um, you know, and have a significant discussion about. You know, where we are with the personnel policy and what changes uh need to be implemented. Um, so if I could have the liberty of having one more month to address that, I think that would be helpful for me. Uh, I have no problem with it, any other member?
Let's move on then. Um, uh nine C, discussion of blight level of involvement.
Okay, so at the last meeting. Uh, I had initiated a conversation about. Uh, kind of understanding where we are and what. Um, you know, where we should be in terms of enforcing light actions. Um, so the first thing I would do is if I can have your indulgence, I'd like to share my screen. And show you what we have. Uh. You know, kind of what things are on. Okay, so you should see my screen. Uh, this is a list basically going back about a year of all the complaints. And uh what has been done or addressed, so you can kinda see what. Uh, you know, what we've been going after. So some of these obviously are repeated and keep popping back up. Um. You know, and some of them were resolved fairly easily. Some are going to be really ongoing. Um, and I guess my real question for the board is. How many do you want to kinda deal with and what types of things do you really wanna go after? Um, because. You know, I still contend that there's an awful lot of properties in town. That meet the technical definition of our blight regulation. And I really don't wanna go after. Most of them. I really wanna save it to go after. A few of the worst, essentially what I would call. You know, egregious cases. Um, like six-six-four. You know, uh, Route six and not necessarily go after. Uh, a lot of other houses. Um, but that's, this just gives you a list of the things that we've gone after. Uh, in the last year, uh, and kind of what the status of it is.
Okay. Um. Does anyone have any issues with Eric's? Theory and philosophy about going after the blighted properties? Scott and Jeff, I'll specifically get to you two.
This looks good. I just um. I'd like to see, can we keep revisiting this over the next few months and just can we get updates on it like how we're progressing? On some of the properties?
Okay.
You know, like where your box is current status, you could say current status seven, ten. And then eight, ten, we could see where we are at with some of the open items like just, you know, progressively looked to make sure that. We are actively dealing with it and if something needs to be um. Like um, two forty-three Long Hills has noticed to be sent, like to see next month. That there was a notice sent and they were actually dealing with some of these on a case-by-case basis. Is that agreeable to everybody?
Yeah. Sure. Eric, could you move that to the other page, please?
Sure, that one?
Yeah.
So Eric, if you can, um.
Well, if these other ones are resolved, then you know, maybe we could put them on a separate page and then just deal with the ones that aren't resolved, I guess at this point.
Well, my my recommendation would be take them off, Jeff, if they're resolved. And then Eric, you, I'm a. You, I don't know what you built this in, but you should, well, whatever you built it in, if you built it in Word, you built it in Excel. You should keep those. So if you have to add them back on, let us know that they're a repeat offender. You know.
Okay.
I shouldn't sit there and say offender. I should say they're they're uh continuation of an, of a previous problem.
Lot of compliance.
Yeah, lot of compliance and we could sit there and address it. But yeah, thi- this is, this is pretty good. I mean, um. Uh. I think this is, I mean, I look at this and and going, we should identify. Um, the biggest problems and use our limited resources to attack the, the, the limited problems, but. Um, I do like the list and it at least gives an understanding of what to look at.
Yeah, I like this list. It's the first time I've seen it and I like it. It's um, it looks like we really have six, six or seven properties to really worry about at this point.
The, the house on one fifty-seven Wales, Eric, has been sold.
Has it?
Pretty, I'm pretty sure it went to a, an auction.
Because her car, cuz part of our, so I've, uh, you know what? That's sensitive enough. Maybe that's something we should talk about in executive session. If you wanna talk about that property specifically.
Well, I would ask, and then this goes into Attorney O'Brien, I would ask. Um, if there are issues on any of these properties, what does the town, what is the recourse for the town? So if Scott is saying that that property was sold. What is the recourse, you know, related to? Work and time spent previously trying to rectify that situation? Is there a lean opportunity? Is there other things that, that we need to be doing as part of a normal course of business to? Protect the town and the town's interest. So, and it doesn't need to be addressed right now. It's just things to think about.
We can do that in executive session. But Eric, um, so if we wanna add to these, this list, we just let you know?
Uh, I would send it to, so this isn't my list. I'm not keeping the list. This is the zoning agents. List and and part of that is because technically. Um, the zoning agent is the blight enforcement officer. So I mean, to some extent, you know, you're always relying on his judgment about how to proceed. Uh, in these situations, although he and I do talk about a lot of them. Um, and he also talks them through with the town attorney also. So Dennis is familiar with a lot of these, certainly the, the worst of the cases.
Alright, anybody have any other questions related to this topic? Eric, I like the list. Thank you very much.
So do I, thank you.
No worries.
Nine D, disposition of two thousand and two twenty. Four bus?
Twenty passenger.
Passenger bus.
Two S's. Twenty passenger bus, okay. Um. What are you doing with it, Eric?
So, um. We're junking them in some form or another. Um. Uh, we either have to spend quite a bit of money out, um, or we gotta take them out of service. Because at the end of August, they're uh not registerable without us. Uh, not re-registerable without us fixing them. Cuz they won't, you know, they won't pass a current inspection. So my uh, my suggestion is that we simply auction them off and use one of the. The government auction sites or use, I I don't know whether we can use the state of Connecticut's. Uh, auction site, um, but that's what I wanted to look into also. Uh, and just run the thing out here.
Do God, Gov Deals or something like that?
Yeah.
Yep. And how much value is there in the two, two thousand and two?
I really don't know. Um, I'll be honest, I don't. To me, I look at it and say it's worth its scrap value and there's not a whole lot. You know, like, there's nothing you're gonna take off that vehicle and salvage that I know of. Um, and I can't see it being in anybody's interest to buy it. Um, and fix it up just because it's, it's got a fair bit wrong with it. Um, and it's got some pretty significant rust, so you know. The likelihood of somebody willing to buy it and do the mechanical work on it and then. Fix it up unless they're a home mechanic and doing it themselves. So I don't think it's got a lot of residual value.
Let's find out and and do what we need to do. Is the, the reduction of this bus from the fleet going to impact any transportation issues?
Uh, yep, it will reduce us from three vehicles. Uh, capable of transporting disabled people to two. Um, number one, and secondly, it takes the bus with the biggest capacity we have. Uh, out of service, so that's, it won't have, it will definitely have some impact. Um, you know, it's not ideal, but we did. Uh, sign the contract for whatever that's worth. Uh, for the new contract for the replacement bus. Um, which the state is again saying will have within the next three hundred and sixty-five days. Um. Uh, I do plan on reaching out to the, the chassis manufacturer, the coach manufacturer again. And seeing whether they think that's a realistic timeframe. Because the states told us we were getting the vehicle twice before and not delivered. Um, so. Uh, you know, we have one on order. I do have a call in to DMV. Because the state is getting rid of a couple of, it looks like twelve passenger handicap accessible vans. Um, or buses. Um, I don't know what age they are. I don't know what condition they are. Um, if we could get one really cheap as a stopgap, I might consider it. Um, but I would bring that info back to you before I even contemplated something like that. Uh.
Definitely go down that road just to sit there and see if there's something available that. You know, could assist because you're probably right. You're not gonna get the, the new bus timely. So.
We did, we did have some good news today. The RAV four is, is on its way. It will be here either tomorrow or Wednesday at the dealer.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, so Erica, that was, it was kind of all around the transportation discussion. Is there anything we need to do to get municipal plates for this vehicle or ensure proof of insurance or anything from the dealer? Because we can't drive it off the lot with plates, without plates.
So first of all, I have the Kerma Insurance Card sitting on my desk.
Okay.
That goes in the vehicle. Um, I, it's a very simple process. We have. Municipal plates for it, sitting at Public Works.
Okay.
As soon as we know the VIN number, we call the DMV. Or we email the DMV and we give them the VIN number information for the vehicle. They assign that plate to that vehicle. We put the plates on, we put the insurance card in it and off we go.
Okay, I just wanted to double check to make sure we're not missing anything.
Yep, no, that I've thought through that one, so I think we're pretty well set with that. That should not be an issue. So if it comes in tomorrow. Um, and we can get a check cut and get somebody other than me to sign it or in addition to me to sign it. I think uh, there's no reason we couldn't pick it up at the end of this week or Monday latest.
Yeah, I just have to make sure what payment is acceptable. If they wanna bank check or if a town check is gonna be significant or sufficient for that purchase. That's one thing I need to check. So if we have to draw a bank check, that may take a little bit extra time.
True, true.
Yeah. Alright, excellent work. Good job, Jeff.
Thanks.
Lady's lined up. Okay, um. Okay, um. Nine E, the AES contract renewal for transportation vehicle.
Uh, that's, so I had sent that to you, Jeff, and I just had, have you signed that? Contract? Okay.
Let's get on that tomorrow. So it's on me to sign that?
Yeah, um, it is on you and we are already taking kids for summer classes. So we're already doing it, but as far as I know, we don't have a contract in place for that and we should.
We should. Okay, I'll have that done tomorrow.
Okay.
Uh, do you have it in the office?
Uh, I probably have a hard copy here. I think I emailed you a copy. To try to speed it up a little bit. Well, um, I can certainly email you with other copy.
It'll be easier for me to stop in more mornings.
Okay.
All right, nine F, a boundary line agreement, uh, Stephen King.
So I did have a conversation with our town engineer. Uh, it has been, uh, partially reviewed by the Nathan Jacobson's, uh, chief of survey. And the chief of survey basically said it's really a cluster. Um, that there's, you know, basically what the original. Guy had said, the original surveyor had said was that there's just not a lot of consistency. Between all the surveys and all the boundary surveys. Um, he said he was not prepared to render a judgment on it yet, but he said it's clearly a mess. Um, you know, and that there may not be a real definitive. You know, a lot of real definitive guidance on where the boundary actually is or should be. But.
So did he give you?
We don't have to do anything right away. Um. You know, I'm, I'm waiting on a written opinion from him, uh, before bringing it back to you. We're bringing it back to the board.
Okay. Uh, Scott, do you have anything on this that you want to talk about or?
No, I'd, I'd like to, I, I'll get with Eric about this.
Okay. All right, the bounty, the boundary line agreement with the Hawes family.
Uh, I think as far as I understand, the Hawes family is okay with that. Um. You know, but the problem is, is that the Dennis, not problem, but Dennis O'Brien feels that. Um, that should require an eight twenty-four statutory approval, um, as well as the town meeting. Um, so from my perspective, I think we probably ought to do both of them. So that's why I haven't really been pushing that one, because I think we should do it at the same time as we do the Stephen King. Or the King property, because there's no real reason to have to, you know, town meetings for two separate boundary line agreements.
Right. Is there any need to even have the town meeting or wait till next? The next time we actually have a budget issue or something else come up that we need a town meeting?
Um, I don't. I don't think you can do it with a budget meeting. Um, cause those.
No.
Charter are supposed to be separate, but you could wait till the next time something came up that required a town meeting, if that's what you wanted to do. I don't think there'd be any real negatives, uh, implications for doing that.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to nine G, Veterans Memorial Long Hill Field signage. Paula.
Yep. So we started, we started talking about this last month and we decided to wait until Scott was here to talk about this. So. This was a question that came up in a meeting. Um, with. This, uh, the soccer league that uses Long Hill, they were asking about. Putting up some signage on the fence and, um, down at the field. And we started having the conversation, so just wanted to continue the conversation tonight so we can get back to them on answering that question. Um. So I think at some point it came up a long conversation, maybe. We wanted to make sure that everybody that was using the field had a sign up there and I think that the organization that asked us said that they were gonna. Make sure that. Um, Ram youth soccer had a sign down there as well. So just wanted to open up for discussion and, um, talk about it again tonight with Scott here.
Well, I mean, I, Paula, the one thing that I would sit there and say about signs on the field, I have no problem. Looking at that as a way to generate revenue for recreation. Recreation committee and to do other things like pickleball or anything else that the town could sit there and want to do. Um. So I think we need to look at it as more of a global thing. Are we willing to sit there and put signs on the fence like, uh, a little league field would? And Vale could sit there and utilize some space and, but we could sit there and. You know, we could advertise for the local plumbing company or. The, you know, we could use it as a way to generate money. I mean, that's what I look at. That for, I don't, I don't really believe that you allow them to put up, uh, just their solo signs. Um. You know.
We had it as a rental, uh, kind of like a rental space for the sign.
Look at it as like advertising and we as a community have to be willing to understand that. There'll be signs up on the fence, but I think we try to do it on a larger scale that. You know, you sat there and looked at a six foot, a six foot sign like a four by six foot, let's say, or the. The width of the, the fence posts, which I don't know, Scott, six feet, eight feet, something like that. I mean.
Like the farmer's market used to do that. They used to do banners.
Yeah, you could put a lot of signs up there.
Be, right. People used to. Give the, uh, farmer's market money. They made a banner and put that up for the year. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm with you with that, Jeff. I don't.
I mean, part of what we need to do in everything related to. Assets that we have is to sit there and find a way to monetize them in some aspect. So whether it's the field and we, you know, are sitting there trying to. Um. Have some rental income that comes from it. I mean, we should use that money to support recreation within the community or. The new community center. I mean, those are the things that we need to. Uh, do and, and we can't put that on Eric. So I'm not sitting there saying it's gotta be on Eric, but. I mean, if I had my way, I would sit there and, and try to generate enough rev- revenue to sit there and have. A person be in the recreation committee and the seniors committee, senior center to, uh. To manage all the activities and collect all the fees for, you know, youth basketball and, you know. If we're having a cycling event, collect the fees on that kind of stuff and, um, use it. The signage is just another way to generate some money to offset that cost. I, I mean, that's, that's me. And how I.
Just so Jeff, are we all in agreement that, uh, if you're just renting the field, that doesn't entitle you to put a sign up?
Right.
Uh, I would sit there and say that's correct.
Correct. And I would agree, and I would also agree with that.
You would sit there and say there's an.
If you want to use the field and advertise your soccer program, there would be an additional cost to put a. We probably have to run it by planning and zoning to make sure there's not any size restrictions on what we could put up there.
Right.
Eric should know.
There are. Yep.
So what are they?
Uh, depends a lot on the exact classification of the sign.
Right.
Now, I, so, so Eric, let's get that strained out after and then, um. Paul, I have no problem with those guys if they want to put something up that's portable and movable. You know, I would sit there and tell you, I would have no problem with that.
Yeah, well, the events, well, the events are going on. That's okay.
Yeah.
They have to come down after the events.
While the event's going on, a- and if these new people show us that they want to be partners. Like we all went, want them to be, and I, and we would have less of a problem, I would say.
Okay, so, so this. So I'm looking at this.
During, during the event, a daily sign is, I, I don't see any problem with that either, but.
So if you have a week long camp, you could let, they could put the signs up every day, but they'd have to take them down. Whenever kids are actually playing, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that would, that would, that would classify a temporary sign versus a permanent.
What about during the, um, during the year, they have practices and they have games down there. So you, you're saying. After the last practice, take the sign down and then they can put it up for a game and take it down?
Yeah, I would tell them not to attach it to anything like even the fence, but you know, they could sit there and have a, a fence or assignments. You know, they put them around town or they used to put them around town. I mean. Kyle used to have those like campaign signs around town, advertising signups and everything else. Um, but if they wanted to put something up. You know, while the kids are practicing, I don't really have a problem to advertise to the, to the parents or to the passersby that there's a. Soccer program going on. I wouldn't have a problem with that, but I wouldn't want it to be attached and to be left up overnight. Um. That would become problematic.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm getting this out. I'm taking notes so that when I write back. Overnight, okay.
Yeah, it's easy to get those plastic weight step in stakes and you could just attach it and then you just roll it out and you step it in and you're done for you. Maybe you can put it up in less than a minute.
Hmm, okay. Right. Um, and then I guess in the future, when we're looking into sign, if we want to, if we're talking about. Going down the road with permanent stuff on the fence. So at some point, we'll probably have to talk about size. I know Eric was looking into that and then price, um, what we're gonna. You know, we're not going to decide that tonight, but that's probably something we'll have to talk about because that's going to be the question that's going to come up next is. What size sign can I put on the fence and how much, you know? How much is it gonna be? So.
Should we, should we make that a recommission decision?
Uh, I think we can make a recommendation to the.
Make a recommendation and see if they adopt their recommendation.
I do think that it's something, um, that we should sit there and evaluate like. What is the, right is the right size? How many could actually get there? What would the total income that could potentially be generated? Would it be if we actually worked at it and tried to do this? Um. But yeah, uh, I think we. We can't leave it to the recommission, Jeff. We can ask them to approve it and tell them what we're trying to do and. We can have input, but I don't think we leave it to them.
Okay, but eventually it's, they're gonna be their responsibility to collect the fees and do.
Yeah.
So they should get some input.
Absolutely. Nope, no doubt. And hopefully the money would go back to them.
Correct.
I mean. That's what it should go to. It should go to. Supporting activities like pickleball.
So we did get a check from, uh, Ken. The guy who does the running races on the rail trail, Ken Platt did send us a check for a little over a thousand dollars. Barring any, uh, other questions or concerns from the Board of Selectmen. I was planning on using that money to purchase a picnic table. Um, because we, there's kind of two locations right now that we need picnic tables. I think I can probably slide and justify buying one of them off the connectivity grant. But the other one would be kind of a stretch and I thought that would be an appropriate use of the money if you all, uh, agree to that.
Yeah, location. That location, Eric.
So one of them will be off of Lake Road. On the property that the town acquired a few years ago. Um, with the intention of putting in parking and then also a small, uh, picnic table like lunch spot. Uh, near the, near the brook and the stone bridge. Uh, Public Works has cleared that and put down the surface for it. But we didn't have the money to buy the, the tape. So now I would like to buy the picnic table for there. And then I would like to also replace that really dilapidated one that is at the, uh. At the athletic fields currently.
So Eric, I have a question. If we donate, if we do this. And that those funds are used for the picnic table, can we put a plaque on the table that said, you know, this was donated by Ken Platt and the race series? Something along that lines for the, with the funds. So he actually gets cred, he gets credit for, you know, it's so, you know, there is actually a record that. You know. This was done, you know, this money was donated, this picnic table was made available by Ken Platt and Platt Racing. Services. Would everybody else be agreeable to that?
Yeah, that's sounds up good. Yeah.
If somebody's gonna donate something, they should, they should get something with recognition on it for their donation.
Yeah, that's a.
Well, I, just, just so I'm clear, I'm clear. I mean, he held a race. On the trail.
Yeah.
Generated money and then donated some of the profits back to the town.
Correct. And he really didn't use town property, basically used, he used, uh, parking area, I think at, uh, on Lake Road. But a lot of it was Ben Franklin and it was all state property, but he did use, you know, the local roads, you know, the park and travel too. So. I think it's a pretty generous donation for the amount of effort to his event.
It's a good partner.
Yeah, he's a good guy to have. So even a thank you letter, I, you know, I could probably type something up if we want to. Even do a thank you letter to him, because we should, we probably should.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
I think we should tell them right upfront that we're using the money to, to, uh, you know, pay for a picnic table.
Yeah, correct.
How much are picnic tables, Eric?
So based on the recommendation from the Public Works Foreman, what I'm gonna do is get one of the, the metal. Powder coated metal ones, because basically when you spill food at it. Um, you really need some way to clean them. In the wood ones, you can't clean them very easily. And the metal ones, you can just hose them off. So since we have the ability. A water tank and a pump now, uh, so we can actually do these things if we have to. That's what I want to get. They're about a thousand bucks a pop, um, from U line. And I would get a green and black one, so it matches kind of the other trail amenities that we put out. If that's.
Except, yeah, that's, that's a good, that's a good option because people can't carve in it, spray paint it, write on it. It's, it stays a lot cleaner.
Right.
So Eric, can, did he send you an email with the check or did he send you just, uh?
No, he pretty much just sent the check.
Okay.
Um.
Okay, I think that's great and, and Jeff, we should probably send him a little thank you note and. I have no problem putting some kind of plaque or notice in the, in the ta- on the table.
Okay, do we need a motion to do that or we're, we're good with that? So I could type something up. I could send it to Carol Lee and just put our electronic signatures on it. That's okay with everybody?
I have, I have the, uh, electronic letterhead. I can forward it to you. It's got everybody's stuff already in there.
Okay, that'd be great. I'm sure Adrian's on board with it too, but I'll check with him before we send it out.
Okay. All right, um, anything else on this topic?
Um, do we need to make a motion on that? And also Scott, do you? Want to be in conversation when I start talking about Eric about. Sign sizes and going down there to see how many fit on the fence? Do you want to be part of that since you're the?
I don't know what, you know, it, it depends on how many people we're gonna have involved with this, where we're gonna put them. It, it, you have to put a piece of framework or. Something on that fence.
Wouldn't it make sense for us to measure the fence? Decide the size of the sign and then we decide how many spots are available?
Right.
Equal, you know.
I'm assuming you're talking about on that rear chain link fence is the location.
Yeah.
So I mean, the first thing I would say is that we want to make sure every fence is a minimum of two feet above ground level. Um, because the last thing we want to do is expose it to floodwaters. Um, because that will cause additional damage. Um. So you could some, put a pretty big sign on there. Um, and then the question really is who do you want to open it up to? I mean, just the soccer organizations, do you want handover businesses?
Yeah, but I think that.
Your target.
That's something, I think that's something later to talk about who, who and price. I think right now. Eric, you and I should talk about. What's allowed down there? You were gonna look at, you're doing, doing some research and then we measure the fence. To decide how many we can fit there and what sizes. Right? Doesn't that make more sense? Let, let, let's do it like step by step because. We'll have to talk about in another meeting who we're gonna, you know, open this up to and pricing. So. But Scott, do you want to be down there in that conversation with Eric and I when we're talking about that?
Oh, definitely, yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll set, we'll set up a time and figure that out. Okay.
Now. I have not really gotten back to them yet. Has anybody replied to, uh, veil? Has anybody replied to uh, veil east regarding what option we wanted to take? And what hours?
Definitely.
I had reached out to Zach and I was just looking to see if he responded to me, but I'll sit there and reach out again to him. Because what I wanted to do is I went through his, his numbers and um, you know, I know what I would take if I just was worried about making money for the town, but I'm not sure that that's in his best interest. So I just wanted to talk to him about his total hours that he's anticipating using for the, for any program. I mean, and Scott is right in that we just, you know, we want, we just want a good partner. If he's, if it's a good partner and it works for the town and the community, then fine. Um.
Right.
So anyway, I, I did and I, I was looking for my email on the town email. And uh, I have to make sure that I sent it correctly. So I will definitely get to him tomorrow. Uh, but I thought I had done it later last week. So he, he's doing it for twenty fifth. Then out of his three options, I know which one I'd take, but I just wanna make sure that it works for him. So. All right. What else we got on that? Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, ten new business, uh, Andover's finest?
Okay, I'm suggesting. So in our packet, we have all the electronic um, nominations. We don't have, there was some, some paper nominations that were available. So my suggestion is we close um, anything coming in after today's date, we look at, at, at the next quarter, right? We were talking about voting on this uh, quarterly. I don't think we can talk about all the nominations tonight because we don't have the paper ones. So I'm suggesting next month, we vote on what we have up until today. And we'll tell the public that after today's date, we'll vote on it the next quarter. So I don't know if anybody has any thoughts or comments on that. I just wanna make sure when we're talking about this, we have all the nominations in that we're gonna talk about and have time to look over everything. So where's our thoughts on that?
And you have the one I sent you, right?
Yes, but I, I'm, I, I didn't see the paper ones that might've come in, into the packet. So I, I wanted to go down to town hall and just make sure that there's no other ones that got turned in that we might've missed. I don't wanna talk about it tonight and then we missed people.
Right, yeah.
So is everybody okay with talking about this next month about the nominations and then at, anything that comes in after this date? We'll talk about the next quarter. So it's not like we're closing anything. There's still nominations can come in, but we're just not gonna talk about any nominations after today until the following quarter. So.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, uh, ten B, the local traffic authority?
Okay, first of all, sorry, I meant for that to be at the very end of the packet, so it wasn't in the way. Cause the amendment is really stupidly long to read. So I'll tell you where it's of interest to the commission. And that is simply that, uh, that requires all local traffic authorities to go through training some point in the next year. So I had a discussion with the T two center about what that training would imply. And they first said they were thinking about a one day, eight hour training session. Um, and then they subsequently said, well, maybe it would take more than that. So there's really two options here. You collectively as a board by charter are the local traffic authority. So either you have two options, either you all commit to take the training. Um, you know, or you designate somebody uh, as your designee and then that person has to take the training. I'm gonna suggest you're probably not gonna all want to go through the local traffic authority uh, training classes. Um, if you think about who you could designate, you could, for instance, designate one Board of Selectmen member if you so chose. Uh, and they were willing to take the training. So that's one possibility. You could do myself and, or you could do Jay Tuttle. Um, my personal suggestion would be to do me, to designate me. Not that I really have any burning desire to go through the training, but a lot of what the local traffic authority is and does is uh, negotiate with and deal with the state traffic authority. And that's kind of more my realm than Jay's realm. So I think it would probably be smarter to do me than Jay, but either of those are possibilities. So I'm just bringing that up to let you know, you wouldn't necessarily have to make a decision tonight. Um, because even though the law's in effect now, the training requirement doesn't kick in till sometime in twenty twenty four. Um, but uh, that would be, my suggestion would be just to designate that. Make me your designee. You would still be the local traffic authority, but you would have a designee that has satisfied the state's training requirement.
Sounds good to me, Eric.
How many, how many hours are we talking about?
A minimum of eight. Um, they haven't really, they originally said they thought it would be a one day training session. Um, but now they're talking about maybe more than that. So um, I don't know.
Would we, would we all get badges?
I, if you go to the training, Jeff, I will make you a badge.
I have a Harley.
That's, that's interesting.
So do I.
Um, I don't, I'm sorry. I have no problem having Eric do the training.
I don't either. He's comfortable with doing it, then I'm, I'm fucking with it.
Right.
I mean, I would definitely consider it if it was guaranteed badge and I could flash it as I walk my dog down the road at the people who can move over.
But you need a motorcycle to do that, Jeff.
Jeff, you are the chief of police.
I do know that. I do know. I do not let anyone know that, by the way.
You could probably have that. I don't recommend that, but. I get it.
No, we're good. Who's making the motion?
I'll motion to uh, appoint Eric Anderson as our local traffic authority designee.
All right, I'll second that. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? I. Uh, item eleven, approval of the meeting minutes for June twelfth, twenty twenty three, special and regular meeting.
I make a motion to approve the June twelfth, twenty twenty three, special and regular meeting minutes.
Second it.
All right, all those in favor? I.
I, I'm stating because I wasn't there.
Yeah, no problem. Tax collectors report refund request. Were there any, Eric? I didn't see any in the package.
Uh, yes, there are. There are three. Uh, it is a one twelve. One twelve, uh, Landry Donald J for three hundred and seventy eight dollars. Uh, V C F S Auto Leasing Company for two thousand seven hundred and sixty six dollars and sixteen cents. And USB leasing for eight hundred and ninety nine dollars and fifteen cents. For a total of four thousand dollars, forty three and thirty one cents.
Okay. So. Go ahead, Paul. I'd rather you do it. I hate doing this one.
I know you don't like it. Uh, I make a motion to send out the refund requests um, a total of four thousand, forty three dollars, thirty one cents.
My second.
All right, further discussion? All those in favor? I. Okay. Um, departmental reports. Eric, anything specific that we should review or go over?
Uh, no, you have reports in there from a bunch of different offices. Um, if you look at the totals from the building department, nine thousand, that should put us at or just a little above uh, our estimate for the year. So we collected basically uh, what we expected because, you know, uh, so that was good. Um, that's the only thing I really wanted to, to say. And the library gave out a lot of books.
Okay.
Speaking of the library, I would like to remind people that if the library does not have a book that you're looking for, you can do an interlibrary loan. So just a word to the wise, support our library.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah. Relative to the library, the other thing I wanted to say is uh, the library well pump is failing. Um, we've gone back and forth a couple of times, signing blame various different people between the, you know, the sprinkler installer and, you know, um, we've had it looked at by a bunch of people, um, but Homestead has confirmed that the well pump is failing and it's basically not uh, pumping anywhere near its rated capacity. And it's not a head issue. The water level is where it is. It's just the pump itself is failing. So I think sometime in the next month or so, we're gonna have to replace the well pump um, for that. And since that's a probably well over what they have available on the library's budget, I'm assuming we're gonna do that from the building maintenance fund. So I'm just giving you a heads up. Uh, the only quote I have is from Homestead. It's about thirty five hundred dollars. You know, which is probably not unreasonable in, in today's market.
That's total done?
Correct.
Very reasonable. Jet pump?
No, it's a submersible, right?
It's a submersible.
Submersible?
Yeah.
That, that's the variable speed one, right? That we, did we buy the variable speed one for there, I believe?
Well, we got the variable speed controller setup for it. Um, yeah.
Why? It's gone previously?
Yeah, we replaced it a lot six years ago, five, six years ago, was replaced.
No, I don't think, we didn't replace the pump. We replaced our, our end of tank. Uh, we got rid of the tank, you know, when we went to a variable speed uh, system.
That's a nice pump. Thirty five hundred sounds very reasonable.
It is reasonable.
Yeah, I, I was not, I, I was expecting it to be higher than that. So I'm, I'm not unhappy with that.
I mean, if it's failing, should we just, do we have, do we have money in contingency right now? Just make a motion, just get it done?
Uh, well, I mean, we would, I wouldn't take it out of contingency. I would take it out of the building maintenance fund. Cause that's exactly what that fund is for is to, to deal with larger things that come up in buildings that don't have a big enough, you know? You can't have a big enough maintenance budget for each building to account for something catastrophic.
Before it fails.
Yeah, I'm of the thought now, if it fails next week, then we have the motion in place and we can replace it.
Right. Yeah. If you wanna make a motion, that's fine.
What do you think, Jeff?
Absolutely. Let's go. Why wait? Why wait now? Get done.
Okay.
So who's making the motion?
I'll make the motion to allocate thirty five hundred dollars from the building maintenance fund for the replacement of the well pump at the Andover Library.
My second.
All right, further discussion? All those in favor? I.
Yeah.
Um, as, as a, one other thing, Erica, the um, building department monthly numbers were at the back. Is, have we done anything related to the permit costs?
We have not, but it's still on my list. Don't worry.
Okay. All right, um, correspondence? Nothing. Uh, let's uh, move public speak above the executive session so that we can all sit there and uh, communicate. So Mike, Kathy Plazzy, do you have anything to leave us with?
Um, the only thing I'd like to say is thank you very much to the Board of Selectmen for all the help they've been, especially Jeff Murray and Scott Person. And uh, also I wanna thank Paula for all the help she did with the one seventy fifth. Uh, it means a lot to people like me uh, that really doesn't have any input with the Board of Selectmen or with, with anybody else in town. But I wanna thank you very much. Means a lot to me. Means a lot that we're gonna get a new car. You can't believe how happy I am. And I wanna thank Eric because if it wasn't for Eric backing me and telling me what we can and cannot do, I don't know what, I don't know what I would do. So thank you very, very much for everything.
Okay. Linda Fish?
Very welcome, Kathy. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Kathy.
Hi, Linda, you're up.
Um, I was just listening.
Okay. Joanne Ebert? Thank you.
Sorry.
You're all good?
Trying. I'm all set. Um, I'm hoping I'm gonna be invited to join your executive session since I'm part of the negotiations committee. But I don't know if that's forthcoming, so I'll wait and see. Thank you.
Uh, Leanne Hutchinson?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thanks. Um, about roughly fifteen to twenty years ago, there were four portraits in the lobby of the town office building. Um, my grandfather, John Yeoman's Percy Cook, Gene Gasper and Elfris Cobble. And they were taken down at some point quite a while ago. I don't know if it was for cleaning or painting and they were never put back up. Um, these were to honor people who had put in decades upon decades of service to the town of Andover. I have checked with some of my relatives. I've checked with several former first selectmen, um, Board of Selectmen members, uh, the town clerk, a couple of other people who were frequently in the building. And nobody has any idea where these portraits are. And I don't know why they weren't put up promptly after whatever activity they were taken down for in the first place. Does this sound familiar to any of you? Um, is there anything you've ever come across?
I, I know the portraits as you're talking about. I was curious about where they were, where they went also. Leanne?
Yeah, like I said, it's been um, quite a while since they've been taken down. And I've spoken to everybody I can think of who may have come across them and so far, nobody has. The only other person that I have a contact information for that I haven't reached out to yet is Ed Turn, who I believe is now in Florida. Um, but other than that, does anybody have any knowledge of this?
Um, I, I don't have any specific knowledge, Leanne, but I will tell you, we will sit there and see if they're in the town hall and if we can find them. And we'll get back to you. We'll have Scott report back to you on this.
Okay, anything you could do would be helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
I just can't imagine they would be in the town hall. I wouldn't have seen them at some.
Could they be at the museum or in the garage?
Weekend. Um, Scott Yeoman doesn't know where they are either.
Okay, I just, I was wondering, did you talk to him yet?
Yeah, they know he's a, that's a very good suggestion, but he has, he doesn't know. He doesn't have any information about what happened to them either.
Do, do, does any of us know when they were taken down?
I don't know exactly. I would say roughly it's been at least fifteen years. Maybe not quite that long, but it's, it's been quite some time.
Yeah.
And as I said, I can't imagine why they weren't stored um, in a, you know, somewhere obvious or somewhere safe, et cetera. Um, and uh, and put back promptly, but they weren't. And it's, you know, it's just, it's, it's a waste. I mean, these were people who were, you know, a great deal of thought was put into honoring them for the, just the sheer longevity that they had in town and, and like I said, I will contact Ed Turn, but if it, anything, anybody comes up with anything, that would be very helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Um, so I, I believe I've, I've asked everyone. Um, so we have executive session related to the union negotiations. Um,
Jeff, before you stop uh, for Leanne, you may wanna put a post up on, there's a Facebook page of people who. Jeff, before you stop uh for Leanne, you may wanna put a post up on, there's a Facebook page of people who grew up in Andover, Connecticut. And post it there and see if anybody has any idea.
Yeah, that certainly wouldn't hurt. Thank you. I'll do that. I'm, I'm on that page.
Okay.
Okay. Um. So did I miss anyone for public speak? Okay. Um, so we have item fifteen on our agenda, executive session related to union negotiations. Um. Does anyone have a, a problem? With us sitting there inviting Joanne Ebert to that executive session? Okay.
So I would suggest you invite me also.
Yeah, I was getting around to that and uh Dennis, um, would you like to be invited to that?
Of course.
Okay. All right, um, so uh. We're going to sit there and end our current. Uh, regularly scheduled meeting and I'll make a motion to move to executive session. Uh, regarding union negotiations and invite uh Eric Anderson, Dennis O'Brien and uh Joanne Ebert. Everyone else, thank you very much for joining us and Eric, if you can stop the recording, that would be great.
Yep.